I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, feel bad I didn't welcome you, so welcome. Future board meetings will be on March the 28th and then April the 25th and then May the 9th. And hopefully we'll have warm weather. Revisions of agenda tonight, there's a little bit on the HR and then also in addition to the new business at the end. Public recognition, I would like to put forth some donations that were blessed to have given to us. We'll begin with a $675 donation, consists of $50 from Jenny Motors, her Northfield High School cheer, $175 from Wabash Engraving for cheer, $50 Skygivens, Northfield High School cheer, $60 DJ Services, also Northfield High School cheer, $40 from Charlie Easterday, Northfield High School cheer. Then we also have a $200 Interest Tech Technologies donation for Northfield High School Track, $100 from Head-to-Head Games for Northfield High School Esports. Send a motion to accept. Oh, I'm sorry. I got another one to add, a big one. It's a recommendation also to approve $500 donation from Cortella Agroscience MCS LLC for Northfield Agriculture. All in favor, say aye? All right, staff spotlight, Mr. Keith Everone.
So tonight, our staff spotlight and actually the parent that nominated her, we're unable to come, but we're going to go ahead and proceed on with it. And so Teresa Baker is our Southwood Elementary, one of our Southwood Elementary custodians during the day. She was nominated by parent Kristen Spiker. And so let me just read a little bit about what she wrote. She said she shared these words, "She goes above and beyond to make the kids feel welcome, special, and loved every morning. My son who doesn't go to school yet loves to get to see her in a drop-off line. She is a master at her job and then some by helping wherever needed." So we want to thank the parent, Mrs. Spiker, who actually nominated Mrs. Baker, and thank Mrs. Baker. Again, First Farmers Bank and Trust is our sponsor for this program, and she has already received her $40 voucher to our online MSD store. So again, congratulations to Mrs. Baker. And we'll go ahead and continue on.
Public recognition, please.
Yep, and I'll go ahead and turn this over and I'll let Mr. McDivitt and then I'll share some things afterwards. Mr. Martin, are you, you want to do yours now?
I don't actually have it in front of me, but I could paraphrase.
Yep.
We're just very proud of Kim Bear, one of our fourth grade teachers. She was recognized as the 2023 Greatest in Wabash County as a teacher. And she was in the supplement to the paper. I don't, she didn't have a picture in there, but certainly we're happy to have Kim on our staff. And we're very happy for her winning that.
And I'm going to share some of that later too during my report, but thank you, Mr. Martin. I think that's all you had on the list.
Yes.
And so I'm going to go ahead and continue some of these other ones. And Mr. McDivitt, if you want to find that picture and bring it up after I get done, because I'm going to read a few of these, and you can do that too, as far as Mrs. Fellheim.
Oh, okay.
If you want to find it, let me know and I can.
Yeah, I will.
So Southwood, I want to go ahead and read things from Mr. Martin and I'll just go on through the list here. Southwood received exemplary behavior report for March 4th according to reporting official Joe Rango. Southwood hosted boys' basketball sectional 53. Needs to be noted that what an outstanding host Southwood was all week. Tom Venicle and his staff go above and beyond to make sure everyone's experience is top-notch. From an official's point of view, Tom treats us with the utmost respect from communications, hospitality, parking, and logistics and security. I can't think of any stone left unturned as it relates to preparedness for this tournament. Job well done. Also, as a Southwood community, we'd like to congratulate the Southwood faculty basketball team for their dominating win over the students' sobriety March 3rd's victory. Also, special thank you to Mr. Sparks for organizing the event. Through this event and because of Mr. Sparks' efforts, we were able to raise money for Logan Miller and his family. Logan is a Southwood High School student who has been dealing with a significant health issue the last two years. Also from Southwood, congratulations to Southwood Basketball Knights for their wins Friday and Saturday, making them sectional champions. This is the first time in Southwood's history that both the boys and girls are sectional champions in the same year. This also marks the fourth consecutive sectional championship for the boys' win, boys' team. Way to go Knights. And also, congratulations to Southwood for being named Wayne TV Team of the Week for their recent efforts in sectional play. Check out the link to the story, there is a link. If you would like to look at that, we won't look at it now, but it was interesting after the sectional win, they all stayed there, the kids were doing some different things. I believe they were all dressed in red and actually Moses was there departing the Red Sea, which was pretty interesting and fun. So they have a lot of different themes. Also from the Southwood community, we'd like to commend the efforts of senior Lindsay Silvers, Southwood 12th grader. She has selected to perform for the county honors band and choir for all four years. Lindsay considered dropping choir during her seventh grade year, but she ultimately chose to stick it out. Way to go Lindsay, congratulations on outstanding achievements in the arts. Also, congratulations to our Southwood students who performed at the county honors band choir performance on Friday, March 10th. They were outstanding. And one thing I want to say is that Lindsay was the only one out of all of the students in Wabash County that has the four years for both band and choir. So that's quite an achievement, a lot of time spent. So congratulations to varsity Knights. They made it to regionals for the four straight years. Saturday, they won against their opponent Blue River Valley. With this win, the Knights will be going to their second semi-state in three years. Our Knights are now in the final four, actually the final eight, one team in northern, well, and, okay, I should just read it what it says because it's correct. The final four 1A teams in the northern half of the state. The Knights are in the final eight 1A teams in the state. What an amazing situation for a team that started the season with five straight losses. Also, congratulations to Jason Wilkrisik, senior, for being nominated again for Max Preps High School Athletic of the Year, uh, Week. Jason was nominated for his most recent performance against Blue River Valley in the regional game that the Knights won. Jason's stats for that day include 15 points, 10 rebounds, and the 56-38 win. By the way, they were actually down three points at halftime and then came up second half and won by 19. He has been averaging 10.6 points, 6.3 rebounds, 2.7 assists, and 2.5 steals. You might remember that Jason was nominated in October for his efforts in the football field. At that time, he was nominated for his outstanding performance against Tippecanoe Valley in a 28-26 night win. He had 22 tackles, 10 solo, 1.5 tackles for loss. Way to go, Jason. And Northfield, thanks to Metal Source for helping out and spotlighting Northfield art student junior Lane Denton. Check out the post from Metal Source that was shared on Northfield Facebook. But here's the shorter version. Lane is a junior at Northfield Junior Senior High and completed his intricate jaw-dropping scrap metal sculpture for a sculpture two course. He stopped by our Plant One location in November of 2022 to pick out scrap metal pieces to start his project. Four months later, we are looking at this masterpiece. Great work, Lane, your talent is unbelievable. So hopefully you check that out, Metal Source, those are very, very neat. So I believe, Mr. Martin, that's all I have for recognitions at this time.
All right, thank you. Any probably comment on the agenda items you will have tonight?
So Ms. St. Clair, she's not getting into pictures, but Karen Redd is Mrs. Fellheim. And she's, she wears a lot of different hats in school. She's technically like the in-school suspension support person, but she does a ton of things for us. But that's who helps pull this off, her and Ms. St. Clair. And that's the other staff members from school that were there the days. Thanks, Mr. Keith.
Thank you. You can stop it and I'll get one back.
Of all the things that go on during their time, that they're, you know, the dances and stuff is what they'll remember, stuff like that.
Oh yeah, they're already asking us for pictures. Which we're happy to get one. We just can't fulfill their orders as fast as they.
That's well worth all the efforts.
Thank you, it is.
Moving on, we have approval of minutes from the parent meeting on the 28th of February and motion. They all just looked at us.
Sorry.
Didn't smile. Motion to approve minutes?
I move to approve those minutes, second.
All in favor, say aye? Claims, any questions there from Mr. Coon?
I move to approve claim.
Motion of second, all in favor, approve claim, say aye? Payroll.
No real differences in payroll. We will start, I think I've mentioned this the last couple of board meetings. Those ECAs for winter sports are coming through as the sports ending. So that will fluctuate up a little bit on a higher amount from time to time. At least for these next two payrolls coming up.
I have a motion and second to approve payroll this evening, all in favor? For my financial summary.
Now, this is usually the board meeting of the month that we, I could give you a look at what the end of the month was for the previous month. So this would be the end of February balances. So you can see in education fund, our beginning balance, we started in the beginning of the year. So that would be January 1, the beginning balance in February 1. So the ending balanced where we sat at the end of February. So everything looks good, moving in the right direction.
Questions? Thanks, Chris. Can you grab your HR? I'll try and stumble through the names again. Resignation, we have Katie Singleton, teacher at Northfield High School. Rena Ruus, Cook, Northfield High School. Brittany Hoy, paraprofessional, Metro North Elementary. Amy Wilson, teacher at Southwood High School. Those are resignations. Underemployment, we have Mark Smith, custodian, Southwood High School. Ariel Dale, teacher, Sharp Creek Elementary. Hannah Brewbaker, teacher, Northfield High School. Jody Dale, assistant golf coach, Southwood High School. Rod Cole, junior high golf coach, Southwood High School. Under leave this evening is number 152, began on the 26th of July and running into October. Transferred Jessica France, moving from math teacher at Northfield to PE teacher at Metro North, Sharp Creek. And that'll begin in August, new school starts again. Under retirement this evening, we have Jerry Middleton. He's the head custodian at Southwood High School.
Well, why don't you go ahead and vote to make sure and then we'll talk. So I've done that before, talked about it before, and then if you don't, it could be a problem, so.
All right, do you have a motion to approve?
I'm going to approve, make sure.
All in favor of approval, say aye?
Aye.
All right.
Two things I want to say. First of all, though, Jerry Milton, head custodian at Southwood, we want to thank him and congratulate him. He has been with us, and he actually started on August 3rd of 1998. So he has almost 25 years when he finishes, but 24-plus years. So we just thank him for all his efforts. He's always positive and just an all-around good man, and we just appreciate all his time. Never spent to help out at Southwood Junior Senior High School. And then now, we do have one of our candidates, though, if we go back here, I was kind of messing with this a little bit. So employment, Ms. Ariel Dale at Sharp Creek. We want to welcome her to MSD of Wabash.
Thank you.
She's no stranger to MSD or Northfield or Sharp Creek. So we allow you 15 minutes to share anything.
My mom has supper.
But no, it's really great. So you spent your time graduating from Northfield, very successful, a lot of different things. Want to tailor, correct? And you are ready to begin, and we will have that first day on August 7th. And Mr. Drake actually will share things with you too because we have new teacher orientation and you'll learn about that later. So, but we do, I want to congratulate you and glad you're back.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Welcome back.
Marlon Curtis Center, Matt, a report?
I just want to say a couple of things here real quickly. First of all, our 34th annual academic recognition banquet was held. A lot of you were there, but Tim Drake, Melissa Ball, and others in Central office who helped, thank them. Dr. Zach Hopson, it was very good to have him back as far as the Southwood graduate of 2014, being the head athletic trainer at IWU. So 21 students present, I just want to give you a rundown. I thought this was interesting, of the students, what they're looking at for their careers. We had three that mentioned engineering, two accountants, music education, exercise science, EMT, ag business, wildlife management, biology, business, biomedical, psychology, communications, three in nursing, cybersecurity, and forensics. So it's just interesting. I write those down real quickly and I thought it'd be nice to keep, you know, some record of that and just share that information. Also then, I know that Mr. Martin already shared this, but in the supplement here to the Wabash Plain Dealer, March 11, 2023, 2023 Wabash County Greatest, we did have, he already mentioned, greatest people. As a teacher, Kim Bear, Sharp Creek, appreciate Mr. Martin sharing that. We did congratulate her. She did not know she got this honor, and typically they share with other people. So I don't know what really happened with that part of it, but we appreciate them doing that. And then also the greatest businesses, places to work, MSD of Wabash County was the winner. So congratulations to all of our people that work for MSD of Wabash. And then the preschool daycare, we actually got second place, but appreciated all those people that helped get to those accolades. So just want to share that information and that's where I have for now.
All right, thank you. Mr. Drake?
I know, I could talk whatever, but no.
That's okay. All right, we'll move on to new business. Tonight, we have a project hearing, and I've been given quite a bit of paperwork on this, and I'm going to begin by just reading through it as we open project hearing. Next item on the agenda is for the board to hold a hearing on the proposed construction projects. If you're interested in speaking at the hearing, just make sure you sign it out front or go ahead and stand up and let me know later. After a presentation by the administrators, there'll be an opportunity for you to speak. We just ask you to limit your time and direct the comments towards the projects under consideration. The notice of the hearing for this, for these projects is published as legally required on March 1st in the Wabash Plain Dealer. And at this time, I'd like to ask Dr. Coon to explain the purpose of this hearing a little more.
Sure. So pursuant to Indiana Code 2026-737, before a school corporation may spend more than $1 million to build, repair, or alter a school building that will be financed by a lease or bonds, it must hold a public hearing at which explanations of the potential value of the project to the school corporation community are given. The hearing and the consideration of resolutions are the very beginning of the legal process. The resolutions presented at this meeting establish the maximum financial terms for the proposed projects.
All right, we'll now hear from Mr. Coon or Mr. Keith Everone about the process of determining and communicating the project to the community.
Okay, as I think people were, well, aware, well, aware, that did not come out very well. We've been working on our strategic plan for a few years, and we actually looked at some different ideas and looked at the referendum that we had. And we have continued to move along with looking at our facilities. And this is why we got to the point where we're starting this process. We have to realize, though, this is just a starting process, and we will continue on with priorities in the future. But this is just a beginning part, a beginning stage for us.
The one thing I would add is that we did have a work session on January 17th to have further discussion on these projects that were presented to me.
All right, thank you. We'll now hear from Adam Weisner from Martin Code Delma about how the proposed projects meet the required needs of the school corporation.
Small hint out tonight. So as Chris said, this is, that works.
Oh yeah, check out.
The January 17th kind of work session, this is a summary of that, kind of in a reduced format with the scope for each building, and that ties to the budget for each building. So at Northfield Junior Senior High, locker room renovations there, those are all locker rooms between the aux gym and the main gym, including the coaches locker room and area toward the back. Get fully renovated, scope and design is to be determined. But I think we have that, that covered pretty well based on that last meeting. Maintenance and exterior improvements are basically repairing the EFS system. That's kind of the stucco-looking system that's on the outside of the building. Most of it's in good shape, it could be kept, but we do need to repair things. Put a new finish coat on so it lasts a lot longer for you. So that's refinishing that and then also replacing the tennis courts that are there. Southwood Junior High is the same scope, but also includes the, it looks like I missed the gym floor. The gym floor replacement, which didn't, must have hit the lead or something by accident, sorry about that. But the gym floor, we're going to talk about later as well. The same scope, including the locker rooms, the exterior EFS, and the tennis courts, but also replacing that gym floor. So that's part of the scope. Metro North and Southwood, those are kind of combined here. Metro North has a chiller replacement, that's the only piece there, just replacing that chiller. And Southwood is the roofing, almost the entire roof gets replaced. There's one small section that's still under warranty that doesn't need to be replaced, but the rest of it does get into a total replacement. So that's a short summary, but if there's any questions, I'm happy to discuss.
Gym floor, Adam, basic difference between Northfield and Southwood?
It's the only difference, yep, same scope, just the gym floor, North was about a few years ago.
If there's no other questions, we will now hear from Jim Alessandro from Stifel Nicolaus, Nicolaus and company. Did I say it right, Jim?
Stifel Nicolaus.
I don't know why.
Stifel is weird to begin with and the Nicolaus is sister.
The prior company name was a little.
City Securities. But the merger's been good, so it's all good.
Tell us how it'll be financed, Jim?
Well, we're looking at three distinct projects. Each of these are a separate project and are, will have in effect resolutions tied to each project. Ultimately, our goal would be if you decide to proceed and move along, that we would sell one bond issue funding these three distinct projects. But for the hearing tonight, I want to go through each individually, and then we'll summarize with what it looks like altogether. First one's Northfield Junior Senior High School project. In effect, we have the hard and soft construction costs that were just presented to you. As a reminder, whenever we go to the bond markets, we have cost of issuance. Our estimate for the share of cost of issuance here would be approximately $96,000. Bringing a total project to $4,040,000 is our estimate for this project. If we go to the next one, we would anticipate repaying that over three years. This is purely the portion of that bond issue, Northfield, Southfield, as it would look with your existing debt and your operations fund. In effect, this is only one-third or a piece of what we're going to look at as a total. But you can see for this project, the estimated maximum tax rate tied to this project on its own is 22.7 cents per hundred dollar of assessed value. Next page. We go to Southwood Junior Senior High School. If you recall, this has the gym floor added, so it brings us with cost of issuance up to an estimated $4,460,000. Again, on the next slide, we'll see that paid out over three years. And the corresponding tax for this project standalone is approximately 25 cents per hundred dollars of assessed value. And then finally, we have the Metro North, Southwood Elementary project, including the roof and the HVAC or the chiller. When you take the hard construction, the cost of issuance, we get to an estimated project of $1,455,000. And again, on the next slide, still funded that for three years. So as we bring that together, this piece is approximately eight and a quarter cents per hundred dollar of assessed value. If you go to the next slide, you can see how we would anticipate this all coming together as one bond issue. So we would stack those incremental pieces together, and that would bring us to an estimated increase of about 38.32 cents per hundred dollars of assessed value over your existing total school rate. So that's an increase, bringing your total school rate to approximately a dollar ten. If we go to the next slide, if you remember when we went through the referendum, anytime we talk about a potential tax rate increase, try to break it down. If you remember, you have multiple taxing districts and different dynamics throughout. The one thing you want to see there, this first section, there we go, thank you. This first section is tied to what we find in the Census Bureau on the median home value in each of your taxing districts. You'll see that everything in the, in there is a straight tax increase of the 38 cents. We calculate that and it ranges between zero to $22 per month. But the, the one I want you to highlight is Wabash. Your portion in Wabash is already, at that home level, is already hitting circuit breaker. And because this is subject to circuit breaker, we don't anticipate any increase to the tax rate in Wabash city portion because we've already hit circuit breaker. So any new increase would be above that. And all the others, we do, we are below circuit breaker, so we would see the estimated impact here. If you go to the next slide, we've added what happens for a hundred thousand dollar home. There is another one that kicks up, again, Wabash still stays with a zero increase. Largo or LaGro. Tell me, I practiced that so many times, I put that together. I didn't get it wrong once in the office. LaGro, you'll see there's also a footnote there that dollar nine, 113 or nine dollars a month. That, this project just pushes LaGro into the circuit breaker protection by a dollar or two on this estimate. But that, as this issues in there, our estimate would show that there will be some circuit breaker protection at the hundred thousand dollars or higher level. And then finally, we've tried to add something for farmland, using the same assumptions before that we use a hundred thousand dollar in farmland. The one acre of farmland is based on the brand-new 2023 base assessment of $1,900 per acre times your production factor. And then finally, we put the formula in there so you can calculate it on your own. And you, you did slide to the next page, which is all disclaimer.
I know, you're never read that.
I'm not going to read that. Any questions?
Thanks, Jim. Somebody pointed out that being able to do this in a short period of time to pay back less front-loading this hazard the very, very first year gives us flexibility for things that will be decided on next, next year.
Exactly, Mr. President. The idea that we're trying to minimize our interest by having a short repayment, but also allowing a lot of future flexibility as you continue to work through your needs.
And if we had a bigger project, that would help us fund that throughout a period of time without impacting the tax rate moving forward.
Pay out over a long period of years, or payback, I shouldn't say, not pay out.
And I just want to reiterate, the total cost, I believe, I don't know that we went over that. When you add up all those numbers was $9.99 roughly. That's the maximum amount that we would borrow, and I think Jim mentioned this as well. Even, even through all these approvals that we. Even, even through all these approvals that we go through, if it is approved to move forward, we don't really have to borrow until later in the year, when we have a better idea of what our estimates bids come back at, so that we, you know, only have to borrow what's needed, so.
Once again, public financing, borrow, line up, and then determine the cost.
That, the goal is that if we can get the bids and see that, we will, although, although also, because we're in a still a volatile interest rate environment, we will continue to monitor rates. And if there were something that would indicate that we were going the wrong direction dramatically, we might have a visit of less than 8 going earlier, but the goal would always be to try to have these bids in place, so we know how much you really need to borrow rather than going to that maximum number.
All right, now we'll open up to public hearing. If anyone would like to make comment, just state your name. If not, we'll close the public hearing and move on to consider the recommendations of resolutions. Mr. Coon, would you like to summarize the Northfield project then?
Yes, so the Northfield Junior Senior High School project resolution is required when the school is planning to spend more than $1 million at Northfield Junior Senior High School. It contains the estimated hard and soft construction costs and the cost of issuance, and establishes the total cost of the Northfield Junior Senior High School project. It also contains the estimated tax impact.
All right, I'll take a motion and then a second to adopt the Northfield High School project resolution.
I'm going to approve that resolution. Second.
All right, everybody in favor of that resolution, say aye. Opposed by the same sign? All right, Chris, would you like to summarize the Southwood project then?
Yes, so similarly, the Southwood Junior Senior High School project is required when the school is planning to spend more than $1 million at Southwood Junior Senior High School. It contains the estimated hard and soft construction costs and the cost of issuance, and establishes the total cost of the Southwood Junior Senior High School project. It also contains the estimated tax impact.
All right, the same thing, motion and a second required for this. Everyone in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed, same sign? All right. Mr. Coon, would you like to summarize that in the third?
Yes, so the Metro North, Southwood Elementary School project resolution is required when the school is planning to spend more than $1 million at Metro North and Southwood Elementary Schools together. It contains the estimated hard and soft construction costs and the cost of issuance, establishes the total cost of the Metro North, Southwood Elementary School project. It also contains the estimated tax impact.
All right, a motion and a second to approve.
I'm going to approve.
All in favor, say aye. Opposed, same sign? All right, then we move on to the next resolution, is a resolution to determine the need for the projects relating to the financing.
So the next, this resolution is a resolution to determine the need of the projects relating to the financing of the construction project. This resolution establishes the need for the projects pursuant to the Indiana Code that I mentioned earlier in the meeting.
I move to the resolution.
All in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed, same sign? The next resolution required is a reimbursement resolution that's related to the financing of the project.
So this last resolution is a reimbursement resolution relating to the financing of the construction project. This resolution permits the school corporation to reimburse itself from bond proceeds for any cash which it might spend on the projects prior to when closing of the bonds happen. It is required by federal tax law in order to preserve the school corporation's ability to reimburse itself.
So this would come into play with using funds for Southwood High School gym floor ahead of the actual bond issuance.
Yeah, or any of the other projects listed, and so we could use our own money until bonds were received, and then we could reimburse ourselves back for that at that point.
A motion and a second required to adopt this reimbursement resolution. All in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed, same sign? All right, thank you. That finishes that portion of the meeting. We only have one more item of new business, and it's recommendation to approve a vendor for this Southwood High School gym floor, would you like to bring us up to date on all that?
Yeah, just to give you a little background, Bartko Wilma actually assisted in getting a co-op system, and we had a couple of vendors who actually took time to come and visit and give us some quotes. I don't know if you want to share anymore with that, Adam, or?
Just that the cooperative purchasing that the state allows speeds things up, that's why we recommend that to you. We reached out to three installers, three said they would come, and two showed up, so you got numbers from two. Coon Specialty Floors, who did Northfield, was low, including the asbestos abatement for the mastic that's underneath the floor. It was actually right on target with the estimate, so it came in great, and we got the recommendation of proving it.
And so it looks like with talking to the vendors on that, they would even be able to start here pretty close to the first of April. So that would get a good start. We have already announced that we would, we are moving our graduations, that's already been decided. And actually, that, that takes care of that part of it too, so we do make this recommendation. Any other questions?
Questions?
It's included the asbestos.
It does, yep, and reinstalling the bleachers, moving them, then reinstalling them, same project basically that Northfield did a few years ago. Again, includes the abatement, and what they're saying now, the schedule is they tend to, it can be done by August 1st too, so that's great news.
Nobody dislike Northfield's gym, huh?
Yeah, I mean, it's striping to be determined, you know, different colors probably.
Same logo.
Different rated floors, but it's not hard like the current floor is, it's much better, much safer. Yeah, very, very similar quality, they look very similar in hands.
I noticed somewhere, Adam, along the lines that it'll be done in two, two phases, like we did Northfield.
Exactly, yeah, they'll, they'll do the bulk of the floor, they'll demo the bulk of the floor first and leave the bleachers sitting, get the new floor on, then move the bleachers on top of the new floor, of course, protect it, then demo and repeat the process under the bleachers, then move them back and reinstall them. So yes, with a big bleacher set like that, there's really no other way to do it, so.
And now, that piece of moving the bleachers, that'd be another expense that we'll have in addition.
It's included, yeah, it's in your number, yep.
Quote, so.
Yep.
The only thing, the uncertainty as far as what we don't know is, once they get the floor up, as far as any fixes to the concrete, as far as the leveling and that type of stuff is concerned, those would be additional costs that would happen. And that's part of the reason why we put in that contingency amount in there, to help cover some of those things, unexpected costs.
They did include the normal leveling, but anything that's major, so.
Yeah.
Some of it is included.
Tell us about the Unimax 100, I saw that earlier, that's just, they'd be confirmed, making a comparable for it.
I'm sorry.
The additional 52,700 on the holster that.
So, yeah, Foster's, let's call it their basement floor, their lowest price floor, does not equal what North has, and does not equal what Coon submitted, so to bring it up to that level, that was an added $52,000.
Well, I beg, but I want to.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah, so that means the same playability, the same deal, the same. Yeah, the first one was a floating floor, which you don't want, Northfield doesn't have it, so that there's pinned-down attached floor. So yeah, to make it apples to apples, it raised the price. Yep.
What happened with Northfield's floor?
It was nice, it was big. Voice looks nice, light. Any more questions? Need a motion to approve then, the vendor that's being recommended to us to do the gym floor at Southwood High School.
I'm going to approve Coon's specialty flooring. Second.
All in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed? If not, that passes. I have no unfinished business before me, board policy, there is nothing, public comment, any public comments? Items to the board? Everybody's quiet tonight. If not, we adjourn.